Very exciting day for me, my first opportunity to work here in Allegheny County and work with the wonderful board that you all have selected and brought together to represent you and just excited about this opportunity and what we're going to be doing in the years to come. Today is a different kind of a meeting because this is our organizational meeting where we select our officers. So for a brief period of time at the very beginning, I'll be running the meeting and then I'll turn it over to whoever is selected as the new chairman. So having said that, let's open up the floor for...
Officially do that.
Oh, that's right. So officially calling the meeting to order. So let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we are going to have our prayer here and we appreciate you being here today.
Amen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to pray at this meeting. Father, thank you, God, that we have people who are invested in your wisdom and your guidance, Father, through this. And I ask you, God, that you would touch the meeting, Father, especially the meeting today. Father, I ask you to bless it. And what you see, you know, we're blessed as a nation who's got this world. We thank you, Lord, for that trust. And we truly, truly, oh, bless people. God may we never take for granted what you've done to us. And we thank you, ask you for wisdom and guidance. However, we'll give you praise and thank you for all that you've done. We love you and thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Your next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
We gotta bring the agenda and we gotta do an amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Help me through my rookie season.
You're gonna amend the agenda to remove motion on minutes and then ask for a motion to approve that with the amendment?
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of the motion on minutes, which will be done at the next...
We'll have some next time, yeah.
At the next meeting. I'll make a motion to approve. Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Sorry, who was the second? Who did the second?
So now, public comments?
There weren't. Nobody signed up.
No public comments, so we can move on into the selection of the new or the representatives that will be on the, taking us into this next year. So let me open up the floor and see if we have any nominations for the board chair.
Mr. Manager, I nominate Tim Evans.
One nomination anymore?
Make a motion to nominate Bill Osborne.
Is there a second with Tim?
Pardon me?
Is there a second for the nomination of Tim? Great. Any other nominations? Okay, so according to the procedure, since Tim was the first candidate nominated, we will entertain, we're looking to see how many of the board members would like to select Tim as the new chairman of the board. So all those in favor of Tim as the chairman? All those? No. What? What did I do wrong this? All those opposed?
All those in favor of Timmy, I voted yes.
Okay, and you can vote for yourself. Is that correct or you can't? Okay. All those opposed to Timmy? Okay, so that motion has failed. So next, we will be, we will entertain a motion or we're looking to see how many folks would support Bill Osborne as the new chairman. All those in favor?
Aren't you supposed to ask for a discussion?
I sure will. Is there any discussion before we take the...
Yes. I think this board is made up of true Republicans.
Okay.
And I think this board should vote for a true Republican. Obviously, Bill is not. He just entered the race after being defeated as a Democrat. He wanted to win, so he changed his party affiliation to Republican. That reason, I vote against it.
Can I say something? Bobby, did you not used to be a Democrat?
I can't hear you.
Did you not used to be a Democrat?
About forty-some years ago.
Okay, that's all I need to say.
That's got nothing to do with this vote, Greg.
Well, it ain't got nothing to do with it.
Go ahead.
Take that hammer with you when you go home tonight.
Motion, sir.
I can't hear him mumbling.
Turn your hearing aid up.
It is.
Let's stay civil in our discussions. Is Garrison did...
I'd just like to go ahead and call the motion. Do we put up a vote, please?
Okay.
For Mr. Osborne?
Yes. So those in favor of Bill Osborne as the chairman? Are all those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Very much so.
Okay. So, Mr. Osborne, you are the new chairman. Congratulations.
I thank the board. I appreciate their vote of confidence and do the very best job we can do to move things along. And for my part, I'm not a political guy. Don't, politics shouldn't be here tonight. We want to work for everybody. The election's over and move forward. So that being said, next up will be to elect the vice chair. I've opened the floor for a motion to nomination.
I'll make a motion to nominate Timmy Evans.
Motion, second for Timmy Evans. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those in favor. Tim is the vice chair. Moving on down, point the clerk to the board. Open that nomination.
I make a motion that we reappoint Daniel Atkins to the, as a clerk.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Point the county attorney. Right now, open floor for... Deputy clerk will open that for nomination.
I would nominate Heather Klein.
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk. I've been spoken to.
Oh.
Deputy clerk, yeah.
We're looking for a clerk.
Deputy clerk. Deputy clerk, yeah.
Deputy.
Deputy, Bobby.
Daniel. Oh, I mean for Angela.
Second.
I have been the deputy clerk for the past year, so just to clarify, I would be the backup, is what we're clarifying.
She would be in my place.
He made the motion for April, right? Okay, I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Point the county attorney.
I would nominate Heather Klein.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I got a couple of questions before we move forward with that. And just in general, on these appointments, are these year-long appointments? And what are the compensation terms that we're agreeing to specifically for our county attorney here? I just, I just don't want to vote on something that I'm not 100% sure what we're voting on. Is that some information that we could have before we vote?
You have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can understand.
I can help it. I can help it. Do we have that information?
Can you pull that microphone back to you? It helps leave me...
I'm sorry about that. I was just asking if there was any information on the length of the appointment or the compensation associated with this appointment here. I'd just feel more comfortable voting on this if we had a little bit more information. I just want to know what we're obligated to down the line. I have, I have no objections to who we're appointing. I just want to know that before we vote on it, please.
It's 12 months in the rules of procedure. So that's in your rules of procedure. Also, that follows along the statute and also it's recommended by the North Carolina School of Government. So it's a yearly thing.
And I can clarify the amount. It's $2.25 per hour and Ms. Klein sends us an invoice each month and she details what she's billing for. If it was conversations with the county manager, if it's conversations about finance with the LGC process, she has a detailed invoice that she sends us per month.
Further questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. The new board commission. I understand we're going to do that one by one. Base committee. And take the paper off. Correct, thank you. Okay, first, first up, Allegheny Agriculture Advisory Board. I've opened the floor for a nomination.
Nominate Greg Walker.
Motion here, a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Both, five oh.
Who is it?
Greg.
Who is it?
Again, County Public Library. We've opened the floor.
I'll nominate Garrison Wagner.
Motion here, a second? You have to do a second on me, Tom, please.
I think you do. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand.
I don't have.
Allegheny group bones?
I'll nominate Bill Osborne.
Okay. Motion here, a second?
Who is it?
Second.
Bill B. Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Appalachian District Council.
I'd like to stay on that board. I've been on it ten years.
I'll nominate Bobby.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Five oh. Blue Ridge RCND. That's been Michelle. Your nominee.
Clarification on what this board is and the meeting time, please?
Blue Ridge, one. I'm on it, too. I'm on it, too.
He's got a question of defining exactly what they do and what to...
Bill, you might have to clarify more of what they do. I can check the meeting time, though.
Well, I know we've done a project through them over to a walkway between the college and the high school, coming down that bank, and those retention ponds. They're a good organization. They are a big benefit. They do projects like that and it's kind of what they're in the business to do. They work several counties. I can't remember if it's a monthly meeting or every other month.
You were on that before.
I was, yeah, I was.
I don't have that information. I'm sorry about...
Important to keep, correct?
It is. I'll take that one.
Make a motion for Bill.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Council on Asian.
I'd like to stay on that board. I've been on it ten years.
Nominate Bobby. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Building, Grounds, Facilities Committee. That's been Timmy and Bobby.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the italicized stuff in green there, it was suggested to include court security and renovation in that line, just to make that clear.
Thank you.
I'd like to stay on that.
Me, too.
I'll make a motion for both of them to stay on it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Extension Advisory Leadership Committee. That's been Bobby.
Nominate Bobby Irwin.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Fire Grounds Board. That's been Michelle and Bobby.
I'd nominate Bill and then I'd like to stay on it. Bill and I served on that before, I guess, four years.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Fire Commission. That's been Michelle Luthman.
I'll make the motion. Bill be fire commissioner. Or Garrison. Either one.
The motion is second. All in favor? Five oh. Moving on, cross page. High Country Council of Government. There's a call, ain't it?
I make a motion to put Bill on that and remove me from that trip.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. High Country RPO Advisory Committee. That's been John Irwin. That's Department of Transportation's what that amounts to. It's every other month.
February, May, August, and November, the third Wednesday.
Quarter, I think.
I nominate Greg Walker for the RPO advisory and for the RTAC, Rural Transportation, because those meetings are on the same day in Boone at 10:00 and 2:00.
Okay, we've got a nomination. Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Home and Community Care Block Grand Advisory Committee. Bobby, currently on that.
You want that, Bill?
Workforce development.
Oh, well, I jumped a gun up here. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay. Country Workforce Development. This was John also, John Irwin.
I'll make a motion and point Garrison Wagner.
Got a motion here, a second?
Second.
Discussion? Not all in favor? Okay, Home and Community Care Block Grand Advisory Committee. That's been Bobby. Best call. I'm blessed already. Somebody else want that?
I'll take it.
Ah, thank you, Greg. Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? U.N. of Crime Prevention.
I'll make a motion, Bill Osborne.
Got a motion to here, a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Five oh. High County Chamber of Economic Development. That's been Michelle Luthman.
Make the motion and point Garrison Wagner.
Got a motion here, a second? I'll second it. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Five oh.
Mr. Chair, just to make a note, too, we are going to change the name of that to Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce because they changed their name a while back. So we'll update that on the sheet as well.
Thank you. Local Emergency Planning Committee. That's been Michelle Luthman. Bobby on that? You sure?
I'm sure.
Can you?
No.
Ready?
Yeah, put me out.
Removed.
Got a motion, a second? Two seconds about. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Five oh. High Regional Advisory Board.
Oh, I can do that.
Make a motion and point Timmy Evans.
Second, yeah. Got a motion, a second. All in favor? Five oh. Northwest Regional Library Board.
I'll make a motion and point Garrison Wagner.
Motion here, a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Partnership for Children.
Make a motion to put Timmy Evans.
Second, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Five oh. Social Service Board.
Make a motion for Timmy Evans.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? New Carolina Water Authority, that's been County Managers on that, but that's also been John Irwin, so...
Make a motion for Garrison Wagner.
A motion for Garrison, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All, all in favor? Veterans Advisory Committee, Bobby?
I'd like to stay on that board, seeing how it's formed, that committee, you were suggesting.
Make a motion, point, Bobby Irwin.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Long Community with the School Board, Timmy Evans and Bobby Irwin.
Um, I'll stay on that if...
I'll stay, if Timmy wants it, yeah, I'll stay.
I'll make a motion to put Timmy Evans and Garrison Wagner on there.
A motion for Timmy and Garrison, but I hear a second.
Second.
I thought I motioned, I would stay on that.
He didn't, he, he didn't get a second motion, but he, he put Garrison on with Timmy.
I made a motion before he said that.
Clarify me here. Got a motion. Timmy and then Bobby said he'd stay on, and then Greg made a motion for Timmy and Garrison to be on.
There was no second.
We haven't got a second, three to one yet.
He seconded the second one. So if we didn't have a second on the first one, then you go to the second.
Understand that?
Whatever.
A motion was for Timmy and Garrison. Had a second on that, Garrison, second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? I mean, it's against, four to one.
Very much so.
Four to one. Order of Equalization and Review. That's the whole, the commissioners. So it stays as is, High, High Country, we done done that one, we combined that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Nominating Committee's been Timmy and Michelle.
Let's talk about that a minute, um... I, you know, when I first come on as a commissioner, there was a nominating committee, but the process is, you know, they bring that, their nominations of all, all these different boards, and we call each other and say, what do you think about this? I, I personally, I don't know why that's needed, because, okay, you have one meeting where those, all of that's brought as information, and all five of us look at it, we got, we got two weeks to dig through it and see if, well, okay, if this is okay, if there's some red flags or whatever, and then we, and when it comes up for action, then we deal with it, I just, I think this is, uh, one of those just...
Not needed.
Not needed committees, so if there's not a problem with that, let's...
The board has the final say, so...
Yeah, correct, so two of us that meet and say is not the final vote, so it doesn't make a lot of sense for that extra process, so I think we just drop it out.
Board agree on that?
I agree. It's not needed.
Okay, I agree.
Fine, is there anything statutorily prohibiting us from disbanding this?
I think you can have your own committees, there's nothing that I'm aware of that says you are required to have specific committees, that's something for the board to make the decision on, and I think for the nominating committee, the reason that it was there was for specific recommendations that those individuals on that committee might make, um, so... But if, if those nominations are being brought to...
To the full board.
The board for consideration, you're bringing the information, and then later, um, you know, you're voting on it at the, at the next meeting, so...
It's still did, done correctly, so I think it's fine.
I think the reasoning behind it was because if there was discussion that was needed in advance, um, or maybe the, the recommendation would not be to move forward with those nominations, to make recommendations for...
That could also be done by the whole board, like, we need some more time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, everybody's good with that, we'll start that now.
Yes.
You know, generally, we take whatever board is appointing somebody, we generally take their recommendations.
Yeah, because they know more about that person than most time we do.
I make a motion to dissolve the committee.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Not all in favor? Raise your hand, five oh. Insurance Committee, Bobby and Michelle, you stay on that, no? Two volunteers.
I'll take half of it.
I'll take, uh, I... Get a motion.
Motion to point Bill and Greg on the Insurance Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Recreation Committee, Michelle and Bobby.
I'll stay if nobody else wants it.
I'll make a motion to point Garrison and Bobby. For the Recreation Committee.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? If not all in favor? Five oh. Ordinance Committee. Michelle and Greg.
I'd say leave Greg on it, and who else wants to speak up?
I'll take that. A quick question, though, isn't it?
Second.
Okay, isn't it, we got a motion, a second, but is there a private organization going through these, or is it a company?
Yes.
Is there any feedback yet?
They sent an update, they've gone through everything, they're getting it organized, they had to send all that information out to their attorneys, then it'll come back, Heather will look over it, and then, once she's had, had the chance to look over it, and we make sure everything's in order, that will begin the process, I think, I think we're gonna bring it back in front of, just, we'll just show, give, share that information with y'all, that you look over it, and before we publish it back out onto the website, to make sure that everything's like it should be.
They're making, are they making changes, actual changes to the...
Recommendation.
They'll make, yeah, they'll make recommendations on what need, because there's some on there, there's like four ones about trash and stuff like, think there's a lot of redundancy in all of it, so that's what they're doing, and making sure that everything's up to date with North Carolina statute, and we haven't missed anything, and they'll give us those recommendations once their attorney reviews and Heather gets to review. Yes.
Queney? We got a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not all in favor? Five oh.
Who was the first motion, the second, sorry?
A motion.
And...
Bobby motioned.
I was first.
Who, who seconded that motion?
I seconded. Thank you.
Configuration and Change Control Board, I'd like for somebody to tell me what that is.
Bill.
I do not know, I don't know what it is. I ain't getting suckered on this.
Uh, Timmy.
What?
I don't know anything about it. He's saying, he's just...
I don't know what it is.
We talked about how the board would vote before, how we would bring, uh, subjects to the board, where we would have action, fore-action, uh... Yeah, that was that change, where before we used to bring something, then vote on it, and not knowing what we were voting on, so now we have it in place, a policy for information, one meeting gives us, gives the board two weeks to look through things, see if they agree or have questions, next meeting is for action, or you can have, uh, you can put it all for two meetings or three, we've done that several times, it's... Something.
I don't know what it was, honestly, I had no clue.
I think we only met two times in the last four years.
I'll take it. Two times in the last four years don't sound bad to me.
Moved.
A motion, here, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Budget Committee.
I'd like to stay on it with Timmy, we've been on it, I've been three years, Timmy's two years, uh, we brought this county into a, uh, positive atmosphere for our finances, uh, if possible, I'd like to stay on it, I don't know if Timmy would like to or not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with staying on it, yeah.
I want to make a motion, the Chair and Vice Chair be on that committee.
Second.
A motion, Chair and Vice Chair be on the committee. We got a second, any further discussion? In discussing, I was on that the first year when, when Mr. Carter came here in twenty twenty, we set that up, and I think it's a very good way to do the budget, uh, and it was set up at that point for the Chair and the Vice Chair, and then I think it was later that it could be any of the board members, if I remember correctly. Heather Hughes here at that time, wasn't that the way that was?
I think we got to a point where with the committees, it was whoever wanted it, it was not a vote, it was, uh, just a, a discussion during this time to say, who wanted to do it, and, and everybody just said, I'll do it, and that was, that was it, it didn't end up being any kind of a vote situation.
We had it the first couple of years, I remember, for the, for the Chair and the Vice Chair, but anyway, we got a motion and a second for Timmy and myself. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh, any opposed? Okay, that concludes, don't it? Okay, going back to the presentation of the Board, uh, bank signature changes, April hand. Finance author.
Rules and procedures. Rules and procedures, credit ethics.
The lines above there.
Ops, the Board of Commissioners, rules and procedures, and also the Code of Ethics. If everybody has read both of the procedures and the ethics, we can vote on that tonight, and if you haven't read it, we can table it for till next meeting in two weeks and pass it at that time, there has been two or three changes made, uh, is that correct? Couple. Has everybody read it?
Yes, sir, matter of fact, we've been through that hundred thousand times.
It's the same version that y'all adopted in April.
Yeah, last, last year, I think, we talked about it every other meeting, so I make a motion that we adopt, uh, the rules of procedure.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Okay. All right, moving on down.
What code of ethics?
We just voted both of them.
Rolled them over.
Then he just did all the procedure, he only did one.
I did one.
He just wrote...
Oh, okay, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I thought we done two, no, that's my fault, Code of Ethics, uh, same applies, if you haven't read it, we can table it, if you have, we'll vote on it tonight, I need a motion to, if we're gonna vote on it tonight.
I make a motion, unless there's anybody got things they want to change, uh, to adopt the Code of Ethics.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Everybody's read them.
Everybody's read them, nobody's objected. All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Presentation of the Board, Bank Signature, and this hand, Finance Author.
This is just information for the board, uh, we will be changing the Chair signature with, with the change of the Chair this evening, so Bill Osburn's signature will be added to our bank signatures, authorized signatures, and Mr. Irwin will be coming off, we did change the County Manager's signature, we'll remove Mr. Carter's signature Tuesday morning, and we will be adding Mr. Shepley's signature with Mr. Osburn.
No action needed on that, correct?
No action needed, it's just information for the board, that that, those changes are gonna be made.
Okay, moving on down to C, General Business, all this is fore-action, and it's to adopt the county holiday schedule, it's April hand.
So for the past few years, we have followed the State Office of Human Resources holiday schedule, this is twelve holidays, you have the dates there before you for twenty twenty-five, uh, just asking for the board to adopt this schedule for our county employees next year.
Make a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty-five Allegheny County holiday schedule.
Second.
Motion, a second, Greg, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
For Commissioners Meeting Schedule, Danielle Atkins.
Um, in your packets, you have the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five, I have included, we did not have any last year, any joint meetings with the town, but I have included those on the schedule, if we decide to set those up, it's the extra Monday, every time we have a fifth Monday, there's an option to have that meeting, it's the standard schedule, you'd be adopting with this one, that we have the first meeting, first Monday of the month, six o'clock meeting, and the mid-month meeting's at ten o'clock, and the morning meeting.
Is there ever any joint meetings with the Board of Education, that's just stuff we fill in as we go?
Right, it's not normally put on the schedule, the only one we tentatively put on the schedule are the ones with the town, any of the other things we would need to have with the Board of Education, we would set up separately, we can do those as special meetings, like we've done this past year, or however we need to do that.
The Board is just, the Board of Education would just be a call meeting, is there a regular?
There is not a regular scheduled meeting, no, it would be a call meeting, and we would do it as a special meeting.
As needed.
As needed, yeah.
We need to get back on that, yep. Okay. Motion to accept Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Second.
Motion, a second, uh, Timmy, any discussion? All in favor?
I'd just like to say one thing before we record this, but, um, when we, when we approved these, uh, joint meetings with the town, I, I would really encourage this board and, and the administration just to stick with holding those joint meetings, uh, I noticed that we didn't have any for, for quite some time, but I think it's important that we focus on strengthening the relationship between this board and the, uh, and the town, so I'd, I'd really like to make that a point, uh, that we stick to having a joint meeting, uh, with our neighbors.
Bobby, you got a question?
I've talked to the new Town Manager several times, and he's anxious to get back and start these meetings, he wanted to wait till after the elections, and wait till after the boards were re- restructured, so it's something I've been working on for the last four or five months, so it's, it's on their radar, too, I've talked with Millie and all, almost all of them, they're anxious to do it.
Okay, I, I support that also, I think it's a, I think it's a must that the three bodies of government get along and, and work together, I mean, it's, uh, we're too small a county, not to, but anyway, let's, uh, we're gonna put that back to the vote, I didn't catch his comments up there, so all in favor of the joint meetings?
Yes.
Yep, five oh. All right, moving on down, County Managers' comments, we got a new County Manager, Mr. Bill Shepley, it's all yours.
Thank you, Bill. Um, I am very encouraged by what I've seen here tonight, this is, uh, an exciting time, we're, we are, it's, it's absolutely necessary for us to build very strong relationships, or to build on the very strong relationships that we've had with the school and with the town, the, the healthiest counties in the United States have very smooth, functional relationships with all the components of the government within a county, and I think that with the selection of the five of you, who I've had a chance now to talk with, all five of you for a considerable period of time, the people of this county have selected the right people to be in place, we, even though you didn't agree on some of the things that you talked about tonight, it was very civil, you got things done, look at the speed at which you made these decisions, you made decisions that were thoughtful, but you did it in a unified manner, and that is encouraging to me, it's encouraging to the people of Allegheny County, we're going to, uh, do some wonderful things, carry through on some of the things that have been started, and we're gonna start some new things in the future, and with your support in building that, that, uh, coalition, or that connection, or that partnership, then we can bring Allegheny County even to higher levels, where we'll not only be recognized for the amount of money that we have in a rainy day fund, but we're recognized for having developed relationships that, between those government entities that are second to none, and, uh, I'm super encouraged about the years to come, and, uh, congratulations to those that have... And I'm super encouraged about the years to come. And congratulations to those that have been selected to be the board members and also the new officers. You know, thank you to those that have served in the past. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And I know that we have a great staff here. I mean, in the, in the period of time I've been here, that the enthusiasm and the care for one another is, is unsurpassed. I mean, it is. It's a beautiful thing to watch. And I don't want to mess that up. What I want to do is I want to include other groups that we need to function with in a manner that makes it so that we all respect one another and we all are look, we all celebrate the victories that, that we have and we meet the challenges together. And I am honored that you all have given me this chance to do this. And that's about it. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Shepley.
Yes, sir.
Any commissioner comments? Before we roll into that, the two commissioners has to take some training, correct?
Yes.
Uh, we got that information or timeframe or whatever?
I will get back to you on it. I've got to dig to find that.
You have it next week.
Yeah.
Let me tell you what I remember of it. It's two hours of code of ethics minimum, and it has to be done within a year's time, according to the state and North Carolina's laws.
Get on that next meeting. Okay, county commissioner comments. Uh, I'll start out. I'm gonna start out by reading an invitation that I got before I forget it, from the Allegheny County Library. They're having a happy holiday event on Monday, December the ninth, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. All the commissioners, county managers, stop by the library from 1:00 to 4:00 for refreshments and meet those folks over there. It'll be a good little event. She was gonna come about, and I think she got feeling bad or something there. But anyway. I'd like to see us, we used to do the, commissioners used to put on a canned food drive every two or three times a year, no particular schedule. And I'd like to know the appetite of the board if we could go back to doing that to help our food closet out over here. I think the time, the need is probably more now than it's, it's ever been in the past. And, and let me think about till next meeting. We'll, I think we need to do that myself. I'd be all for it. Of course, we got a new county manager. I'm, I'm proud to meet him and, and a good fella. And I look forward to to working together. And, and I like your ideas about we all get along. That's a must. I mean, we gotta, we gotta get back to where we was. And we got a new school to build and, and the school board. And I would like to see those meetings, especially during the building app, never once or twice a year, you know, whatever needs at the course of town. I think we need to be back on regular with that. I'd, I'd worked, been working like Bobby on that some. And I just, I think it's a must that we all get on the same page, you know, and, and try to move our county forwards. That's what we need to do. Elections over, the people spoke, we, we work for everybody, don't matter who they are, and, and try to make things work and move forward. And with that being said, the lower to Timmy over here. You're welcome. Sorry about that.
The first thing I want to remind, the reason we speeding up, because every one of us is hungry. We want to go to dinner. Yeah. But yeah, I just wanted to welcome Bill, uh, Bill, Bill O, because we mix him up with Bill Shepley. So welcome, Bill. I'm back in the fold in Garrison. And I really look forward to your direction, Mr. Shepley. You know, new ideas, just a lot of different things. I think it's an exciting time for us. We are in a good place for a lot of different reasons. And we're in a good place to move forward and chart new territory, you know? Not to say you can spend bunches more money, but just, you know, I'm always, it's like, in my construction buil- business, I always love going to home shows. And it's always fun to see the new stuff that might make building better. And it's always been interesting to me that, and you start seeing stuff on the market as it starts. So not, that has nothing to do with local government, but at the same time, it has, it's sort of, is in the same way. So I do look forward to that. I welcome you in. I hope you find the good home here, and I hope everybody treats you well, which I think they will. But I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and they didn't eat too much turkey. So, that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Greg?
I just want to welcome Mr. Shepley, Bill onboard with us. I think you do a good job with us. All right. Welcome. Bill and Garrison onboard. So I think we've got a good team here. Let's start the new year off good.
Thanks, Greg.
Bobby?
Thank you. Couple of things. I want to be sure the county employees know that we're gonna try to maintain this high level of morality that we have. We're at the top of the game right now. And I know there's been discussions amongst the employees. They're afraid morale's gonna go down because of the way this election worked out this last time. But I want to make sure that they know, no board member may address a employee as to what they're doing or how they're doing it. That goes through the county manager. That's his job. That's not one of these commissioners' job. I've never done it. I've never heard a Timmy doing it. I've never heard a Bill do it. So I want to make sure they all know that, that at least I'm behind them 100%. Finances of this county, everybody knows what they used to be and what they are now. And I hope that continues. We're not on a spending spree with the money that we have. We've got the school facing us. We got the transfer facility facing us. We gotta finish up the courthouse. Who knows what's gonna come next? Just because we have a few dollars in the bank doesn't mean we can go out and go to Walmart and go crazy. I intend to be at all meetings. I'm not gonna get up and walk out of a meeting and turn my back on other commissioners and turn my back on the public. Public elected need to stay here, stay in this seat, and come to these meetings with a clear mind and a motion to do what's best for the people of the county. That's my, that's my objective. Other commissioners have other objectives. Mine is do what's best for the entire county. I look forward to this working with, with the board. I hope that they're gonna be a pro board for the citizens of the county. I know some ran on, they were disgruntled that they lost businesses or whatever. That's not the job of the county commissioner. County commissioner is for the entire people. I look forward to working with our new county manager, Bill. He lives on the river. I know it was cold there this morning. But I would like to recommend our previous board, Timmy, Bill, Greg and I. It was unanimous decision to hire you. And I think, hopefully, this whole board will be behind you 100%. Because we gotta keep this county at the top where it is in the state. That, thank you.
Yours.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to thank God for blessing me with the opportunity to serve on this board. I'd also like to thank the citizens of Allegheny County for their support in this election process. I'm truly grateful for your encouragement from the primaries to the present. And at the same time, I'd like to thank my family for their support uh, over this past year and throughout the process along the way. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Shepley to Allegheny County. We've had several meetings, one-on-one so far, and I'm encouraged and inspired by your vision to bring our community together and do what's best for our citizens. As we usher in a new era of leadership for this county, I challenge this board and the administration to work together for our citizens. It's time we unclench our fists and use that same hand to reach out and build up our neighbors. And finally, I'd like to thank John Irwin and Michelle Luffin for the, your years of service on this board. I wish you and your families well in your future endeavors. And thank you to Bobby Irwin for your service as chair of this board. I look forward to working with you and working together with the new board. And to wrap it up, I'd like to again, make another challenge to this board that we treat each other with dignity and respect and leave the grade school nonsense at the door. No place for it here. This is a governing body, not recess.
Anybody have any further comments? I'd just like to say that it's an honor and privilege to be here and afford to work on this board. We've been here before and, and worked four years here. And going back to the finances, that improvement actually started in the year of 2020. Because we've got things turned around and, and started gaining ground. It is gaining ground every year. And this current board's done a super job of making that happen and continuing that to happen. I don't think any of us wants to get spend-thrifty, you know? But I look forward, the board, to working together and, and having the ability to disagree, to, you know, the right to disagree and stay civil with one another. We don't all see the same, same road. And we, we bring things up for emotion. We get out, voted, get on board with it, and let's move forward, you know? That's my take on life. You, you, you roll on, you know? Anyway, I'll quit, quit gabbing here. Anybody have anything else? Miss Heather? Mr. Shepley?
Thank you, I.
And you?
I will mention the groundbreaking for the school is December the sixth at 1:00. Yeah, so.
Friday. April?
June, thank you.
You commissioners got anything, Dan?
I would. I'd like for us to give Bobby that gavel there. He's the chairman for two years. Let me get you a note.
I'll pass it off right here in just a minute. Anybody else? If not, a call for motion to adjourn. Well, they make two laugh. Thank y'all. They said to give that, you present that, you.
Tell him what he can do with it.
Jesus Christ.
I'm still here to me.
Me too.
I know.